Called to order the Board of County Commissioners' work session for June 24th, 2014. Please join us for the Pledge of Legions and salute to the flag.
I pledge the legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and without law. I salute the flag of the state of New Mastroville, the zealous symbol of perfect friendships among United Cultures.
Are there any changes that need to come on the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda is written.
Second. Motion is second to accept the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing now in all those in favor, second to five, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The general purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1301, we welcome the public to attend the county work session, but there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. First item is to review the June 26th, 2014 regular meeting agenda. Abby?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I'm not sure if my agenda... Denisha? I know we made some changes at the last minute, and I think my agenda doesn't match the notebook. I think it's because I took my notebook. Thank you. Hmm, I think it's my notebook that's messed up. I'll try to figure it out. Let's see. So our first item, we'll have the financial expenditure report. I don't know. Linda wants to go over that for you.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Commissioners. Thank you, Abby. This expenditure report is with AP checks, beginning with check number 170550, and the ending check number of 170753. And the payroll reporting period of May 25th, 2014 through June 7th, 2014. The total expenses for this timeframe is $866,027.62. And this is just your normal utilities and payroll. There's nothing out of the ordinary in these expenses.
All right. The next item under new business, item C, is approve or disprove the newly appointed healthcare council sector members. And the list, I believe, is under the tab. And in addition, we're also going to add approving their new plan, which is behind the new members.
Behind where?
They've got a new plan. The first page is the list of new members that they're asking to approve. And then behind that, they've got a new plan that they're working on that they'd like you to approve.
Okay.
So we'll add that.
I know we have a couple of members in the audience. Did you guys want to highlight your plan today? You could do that.
Good morning. So as the Chair of the Grant County Committee Health Council, on your agenda for approval for Thursday is the new members for the actual health council committee. And I also want to acknowledge Cindy McLean, who's one of the newest steering committee members. And so she'll be attending her very first meeting in July, so we want to welcome her to the steering committee. But these individuals that you have in your packet are the individuals that we would like to seek approval for to be a part of the health council. And so you can see we have Mrs. Marilyn Elcorn, who's appointment to the senior sector. We have Brian Cunningham, who will be appointed to the hospital sector. Ms. Alicia Edwards, appointment to the food security and community resiliency sector. And Mr. Robert Mendosa, appointment to the Kobe School sector. And Mr. Lance Strive, appointment to the Silver School sector. As Abby mentioned, if you all recall that, I believe it's probably been over a year and a half now that we actually did our Grant County Committee assessment, in which we had over 5,000 surveys returned back to the health council with input about what people felt that the community needs were. And so as a result of that, we had a 24 percent return rate, which is really a high percentage when you're looking at surveys and getting a return rate. Usually the average is about 10 percent. So therefore, we got a wonderful response from the community. That data can actually be looked at by community. It can be looked at by age group and a number of ways. So Chris can also assist you if you're wanting to look at that data in any specific manner that would be something would be beneficial to you in whatever you may be working on. So that's important to note. The other thing that was devised were fact sheets for each one of the municipal governments and county governments, so therefore that if that municipality wanted to know what the community was saying with those specific questions on the survey, then that is available. As a health council, we've all decided that it's really important to present these fact sheets to the local government so that they truly understand what the community was saying about their needs. And I think that this is like the first time we're ever going to do that. And it's really important to be inclusive, especially with those in the mining district to know what those community needs are. As a result of that, all the data gathering, we will be seeking approval of the actual plan itself so that we can begin to move forward. And we have those, what do they call, sectors or specific groups in which priorities, in which we are going to begin to develop strategies and have a couple of goals for ourselves to be able to meet some of those needs in the community. So with that, Chris, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Just that I think that in your packets there, the templates that you see that looked like this, those identify the four different priorities for...
I don't think you're picturing the whole time.
Oh, okay. The button, yes. The four different priorities that as a result, the health council came up with at a retreat about 15 months ago. And those are the plans that we will be asking for you to approve and condone as the official health and wellness plan for Grant County for the probably foreseeable future till 2018, when the next survey is ready to be done. If you have any questions, I would love to have the chance to answer them today or on Thursday.
Is there any questions?
I put them over last night. It's, I think you got some good priorities, and I'm excited about a couple of them to work and learn some like things in the community. So it's, I think it'll be a great asset. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D, the appointment of two members of the Hugh Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees. And the applicants are Derek P. Nelson, John M. Stanley, Gary W. Staley, and Joe Ramirez. And I believe one appointment is for a physician, and then one is for just a regular member of the public.
Currently among them. Dr. Nelson's on there now, correct?
That's right.
And Dr. Stanley's been there before, right? Two great candidates to be on the panel.
Mr. Staley or Mr. Ramirez?
Not on the board.
The next agenda item, E, is appointment of nine members to the Parks and Rec Committee. Five will be from county departments and four from the general public. And right now, it looks like we have four from our departments.
Well, they're all leaving the room, so I guess that'd be a good time to go ahead and point.
Let's put early.
You said it doesn't include myself.
I thought you were on there. Oh, you are. We have...
Yeah.
I did ask Gilbert Hilton if he was interested, and he said he was interested. So I asked him to send me a letter of interest.
I was anxious to read your letter, but we didn't get one.
So we may have the addition of Gilbert Hilton to the list. And under contract, item F, approve/disapprove agreement for Grant County DWI program, professional services contract recovery management center, or with the recovery management center. And this is one of Cindy's annual agreements that she enters, and this one is for the treatment piece of her program.
Cindy, you got three of them on here under contracts. Did you have something you want to talk about on any of them, or you give them? Okay. Thank you.
The compensation under the first contract for the treatment piece is at a rate of $50 per hour for a total not to exceed $40,000 during the term of the contract. And then she also has a monthly cap of $3,334. And then, under item G, we have the Grant County DWI program memorandum of standing, or excuse me, memorandum of understanding with the Baird Police Department. And again, these are her annual contracts that she enters with the law enforcement agencies, where they assist her in enforcing DWIs, and then she pays for the overtime, up to $6,000 for the term of the contract. And then under item H, is essentially the same contract with Grant County Sheriff's Office, where she's there agreeing to enforce DWIs, and she's going to pay for their overtime again, up to $6,000. Let's see. Under item I, we have...
Before we move to I, I want to ask Cindy a question. Cindy, how many bracelets do you have currently?
How many bracelets? I think I purchased 20. So we have 20 of the Scram, that's the alcohol monitoring, and I have like three GPS, and then I have a new toy that I'll be demonstrating at some point to you guys.
Did someone walk off with one, though? Did we lose one?
We did, yeah. Yes. Of the Scram? Of the Scram, yes.
Did we find it yet?
No.
Or the person?
The person, yes. The person, oh, definitely, yes, they're...
Should be sending to your office.
Currently still in the same system, yeah. No, I wish, but...
Sometimes we make a usage report on your bracelet.
Oh, we can, yeah. Yeah, we use them a lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's fine. Under item I... What's going on over there?
Rob's watching him.
Under item I, we have the detention services memorandum of understanding between Luna County and Grant County. And this is that we're agreeing to house each other's inmates as needed. And we've agreed on the amount of $96.44 per day. And the agreement outlines the responsibilities that each party will have in doing that. And we often have to do that, say there's a conflict, or someone needs to be over in another county for some reason. It's not unusual. The next item on the agenda is J.
You said 91?
It was 96.44 per day that each of us would charge the other for housing an inmate for the other county.
Okay. I'm not seeing that.
Do you go down the first page, under general purposes, paragraph 1?
I don't know. Is it sure of?
Maybe...
I don't even see what's here.
Does it say detention services?
Well, you have to do it all. That's...
Are you one ahead?
Yeah.
Maybe go back.
All right. I understand. Thank you.
Would you like to see this?
No. Right there. You just being it over to...
Then, under our next item, J, we have the juvenile detention center contract between Luna County and Grant County. And as you probably know, that's where we generally house our juvenile inmates. And the term of this contract goes from July 2014 through June 30 of 2015. And the cost of housing our juveniles in the Luna County Detention Center will be $128.64 per day. And then also, for any transports, Luna will bill us at $14.27 per hour, plus 55 cents per mile, gas mileage.
You're trying to make a deficit on us?
Well, I think, you know, it is more intensive housing juveniles. You can't house them with the adults, and you have to have separate staff. So it really is costly to house the juveniles.
Personnel alone?
Yeah, it's really expensive. And that's probably the reason why we didn't also build a juvenile center when we built our new jail, because it was so expensive.
Almost got to have a separate facility.
Really, a regional center is what we, I think, would really help all these regional businesses.
I think we're still working with El Lago.
We keep talking about it.
Yeah, that would be a great solution.
I was talking to the Chair and El Lago, and you seem to think they're working on some things, so...
The R. Shannon, the R., thinking of her work right now.
Our next item on the agenda is item K. And this is a declaration of emergency for Hanover Mutual Domestic Water Consumer Association.
Maria Ellis is saying she can't hear you, Abby.
I'm sorry, Maria Ellis. I'm sitting back too far. The next item is the declaration of emergency for Hanover Mutual Domestic Water Consumer Association. As you probably know, Hanover's having some difficulties with water again, and their wells are not producing water for them, and they're having to use their emergency backup plan, which is using Baird's water. So we've been working with Priscilla and the Hanover Water Association to see what options there are for them. And one of the options that we're looking at is declaring emergency so that hopefully we could get some federal funds and maybe some other state funds. And I believe they've already received a sum of money, maybe $20,000, from the State Board of Finance to assist them in short term, but that's still not going to fix their water problems, so we're...
Is that just for operations, or is that to pay back Baird?
The actual award from State Board of Finance is to pay Baird back. But it's also important to note that the New Mexico Environment Department and their technical assistance crew will be working with Hanover to ensure that they get their fiscal back in line. The other thing that's occurring is that the Rural Committee Assistance Corporation has been tasked with working with the City of Baird and Hanover to look at the rates again for the purchase of that water, emergency water. But it's also important to note that the City of Baird obviously needs to take care of their residents primarily. And so we know that the mayor has a concern about that. So in the worst scenario, if Baird cannot supply water to Hanover, what it means is that Hanover only has a one-day supply to be able to provide water to their residents. I also want to mention that the Hanover Mutual Domestic Board met last night. They approved their resolution declaring the emergency. And so if the declaration of emergency is approved by all of you, then it'll help me to be able to change scopes of work in some existing funding that they currently have to show that there is an emergency need, so that we can begin to work on some of those remediations, whether it's a new well or rehabbing the existing well. It's important also to know that they have two wells. One well is not producing at all. The second well is only producing at 10 gallons per minute. And so what happens is that they have to go and turn off and on that pump all day to try to get at the most 25 gallons per minute, and then it'll just come down to about 10 gallons per minute. So there's a real concern about whether or not they should actually rehab the wells or drill a little deeper. We're looking for studies to see if there's any kind of hydrology report out there. But nonetheless, we know that this community is comprised of a great majority of senior citizens. And so I think that's a concern for all of us. So in the next week or so, then USDA, along with Rural Committee Assistance Corporation, will be meeting with the City of Baird and Hanover to discuss the options and how we move forward with that. So do you all have any questions for me on where we go from here?
Even if they wanted to use their own system, they don't have enough supply.
That is correct.
I didn't know it was that bad.
So we have a couple of funding sources. There was an allocation of the Colonia's fund that was intended for distribution line. We would like to take that money and have a change of scope of work. And what I'm understanding from the New Mexico Finance Authority is that if I have the emergency declaration, that'll help the board decide to shift that money to be able to either look at rehabilitating the well or drilling a new well. There's another $100,000 that's been allocated from capital outlay, and another $185,000 from Water Trust Board. So we could take those funds to be able to alleviate the issue on the short term. I think that we still like to look at the long term, because we know that the intent of the emergency water supply from Baird to Hanover was only supposed to be on an as-needed basis, not on an everyday continual basis. So that's the struggle. And then I guess, how do we keep the rates at an amount that customers can pay, and also that they have an operating budget?
Let me ask you a question, Priscilla. If, we all know, water at Hanover's tough. I mean, I live there. I know it's tough. And you just came up with nearly $300,000 that the Environment Department is willing to give to Hanover, lend to Hanover, however that works out. Would we not be better off going down into a well field somewhere else and just transferring it, since we have the infrastructure?
I think those are all possibilities, but I think...
I know we have to find some water rights somewhere.
Right.
But it seems to me like this needs to be in the Grant County Water Commission's long-term plan. And maybe if we can get with Alex and get all... Hanover wasn't included in that original plan, but I'm thinking it probably needs to be.
Well, I believe that, if nothing else, it's been mentioned, because one of the things that I've done in regards to applying for those planning funds for that regional water storage project, I did include Hanover in the discussion. So if nothing else, they're mentioned. So therefore, again, if we need to do something to add additional funds to that as a result of what's ongoing, then the declaration, if we apply for Colonia's money, will only bring that application to the surface, and it'll bring it to a top priority, because we have the emergency declaration. So that's where it would be extremely helpful, because they say that there's a great need. And I don't know, because we've been here before, and if you all recall, I think it's maybe between seven and 10 years ago, this happened before, and we didn't have an emergency water supply. And I can just recollect that this...
I remember holding all the bottles of water up there from my warehouse.
Semi-tex full of bottled water and the water buffaloes, but it still was hardship for those residents, because those residents couldn't even let the pail, you know, to be able to put water in their sinks or wherever they needed to be. So there's some real struggles out there. And so unfortunately, we know how the funding moves. It doesn't move as quickly as we would like. Those findings that I mentioned have already been allocated. But we know that a capital outlay, we're not going to see an agreement till about September, October. So we can't do anything, because there's no emergency clause in there. We can't get reimbursed for anything. So we have to wait until that grant agreement is executed.
Do you happen to know if Baird's constraint or limiting factor is the amount of water they own? And jump in if you know this, Sheriff, whether their limiting factor is the amount of water they own or the amount of water they make?
My understanding from Charlie is the amount of water that they're producing currently.
So they have more water rights than they're able to produce?
That is my understanding. Just because his biggest concern, and please correct me, Harold, his biggest concern is that their priority is their residents.
No, I totally agree with that. I understand.
And we understand that there's also an issue, but never at this point that we determine that they would be where they are again so many years later.
Right.
But unfortunately, we're there.
But if they have more water rights, maybe we should spend that money on a new well field in Baird and get them more water, so they can get more water, too. I know you've got a lot of entities working there. I'm just kind of thinking out loud.
What I don't know is what the regional water storage project PR says, because it's not in its final stage. I know that they've done a lot of work with it, and that's a Colonia's funded planning study. What I can say is that if that's something that's addressed there, and we go back to the Colonia's board to be able to secure the funding, or whatever that source may be, I think that it's only going to help us. And so I was under the misunderstanding. I thought that the Colonia's money would sunset in five years, and actually, there is no sunset clause. So that money's going to continue to be there, and that's why it's so important to get the planning. Right now, we need to look at where we're at, so that if we need to apply again, they're looking at another application round, probably in December is the application deadline is kind of what they're looking at. So there's another opportunity there. And if there's a potential of some reversion of dollars, because Hanover has already applied in two of the funding cycles, and we can always go back and put some reversion dollars to an applicant that's already applied in the previous year. So that's something we want to keep in mind. So that's kind of where we're at with Hanover. And then to add to that, there's currently, Eddie's here, but he's waiting for a call from New Mexico Rural Water, where they're going to go back and look at if there's any loss of water in the system itself. So they're going to look at a leak detection system and see what's going on there, if there's any issues there. Because if you look at the water usage, you can see large, there's a month where there was a large percentage of consumption. And also that the City of Baird contract between Baird and Hanover says that they could only allocate 200,000 gallons per month. And if you looked at, I think it was probably in Week 2 of June, they had already tapped into 125,000 gallons. So that's just telling me they're going, it won't be long before they're going to exceed the 200,000 gallons. We have to cut it off at 200,000 gallons. That's a contract. We have to cut it off, because the last thing we want to do is jeopardize anything with funding at the state level, federal level, or any relationship at the local level.
Is the Environment Department also looking at that?
Yes.
Okay.
And so they also have a bunch of paperwork that they've given Hanover to ensure all these pieces of compliance for federal and state requirements.
So our involvement at this time is the approval or disapproval of R. 1432, which declares a disaster in the county, which opens up doors for funding.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else?
What kind of situation?
Yes, it is. Very complicated.
Other than we may end up being the dealmakers.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, because I'm not on the system.
Okay.
We'll move on to resolutions. Item K is, oh, I'm sorry. Finished with resolutions. Next, we have the energy claims. And that's under item L. And this is, Linda confirmed that this is the last set of claims under the old plan, and then we'll be switching, I believe, July 1st to the new...
You still don't know how much we're going to get billed for the last six months.
And I don't think we know exactly how...
It was clear as mud when they got through telling us last week.
That's what I saw.
And I had to go ask again. And I don't think we're clear on how this new system's going to work. We're still waiting for instructions on that, too.
I think we just send 1/12 of a percent of grocery receipts and...
Well, in September, that's our first payment happens. Then we know how much to send them. We just don't know the other details.
I actually think the county's taken completely out of it. We don't send reports anymore or anything.
Right. That's my understanding.
I think you just send the money.
I hope.
Figure out 1/12 of a percent of whatever grocery receipts tax you and send it up quarterly.
I think there may be more instructions from HSD. I'm not sure.
What we use to get to use for our hospital goes to the state.
There are 435 claims in this group of claims, and it's a total of $48,813.70. And Jacob has confirmed that we have the funds to pay this.
That's good.
Yes, we have them. Not for long. And that's the end of the agenda.
Okay. So we'll move into county reports.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot. We do have some contracts that I'm going to need to add, and we are... We do have some contracts that I'm going to need to add, and they are for the seniors program.
Okay.
And it's nothing surprising, it's going to be three new agreements, one for the senior employment program agreement, the next one will be the nutrition service incentive program agreement, and also the direct purchase of services vendor agreement. And these are just their usual contracts that they wish us to enter, to continue with the program.
So if you get Mr. Hilton's letter, we can get his name put on there, we can get those three contracts, and that'll be the only changes that we know of. Okay. Next items, county reports. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and commission members who respectively submit my report for June 11th, June 24th, 2014, Grant County Detention Facility. Item number one, policies and procedures, status remains the same. The detention facility update, Grant County facility currently has two vacancies. We are reviewing applicants at this time. Item three, the assessments, status remains the same. Item four, our training update, the newly highly, newly hired officers completed their old seat training on the 20th. Both officers obtained their certification, the old seat spray. Our cert supervisors and officers completed 40-hour training with the Department of Corrections in Los Cruces on June 20th. Speaking with them, they, they did building clearances, they did crowd control, they also did use of force, and they, they all came back, said it was still great training. Department of Corrections will be doing this every three months. I think the benefit is not only that we're getting the training at no cost, they're providing the equipment, but the other advantage to that is the fact that they train with them, so if we ever need the Department of Corrections for whatever reason at the facility, they'll know what their protocol is, they know how they train, and they can complement each other. And the same thing if the Department of Corrections is getting hired individuals, that's the trade-off. We can send them up there and they also know, they know exactly what their movements are, and so I think it's a win-win situation for both agencies. I attended the Association of County affiliate training courses. They covered policies, procedures, governing special needs inmates, and that's a very big item across the state right now. The inmates, the policies approved by the Association of Counties will be made a part of our policies also. I also attended, made our mental health substance abuse disorder training by the Association of County staff. After completing that course, I brought back the training material for our training sergeant, and what he'll do is he'll be applying that to our field training, part of our trainings for the newly hired officers and also for the hires, because it is a recommendation that they receive this training, that is part of the 40-hour training. Also, the pre-op policy, and that's a policy to govern sexual assault by inmates or staff. This is also discussed, and it is mandatory that all facilities in the state implement this policy. We are doing that, our policy is in compliance at this time with that initiative. The other subject was, there is a county right now in the state of New Mexico, there's a class action lawsuit. Reason they discussed this with us, it pertains to immigration holds. And so I got a call yesterday, they wanted to know what our status was, and what I feel is best for the facility, here at our facility and for the county, is that anytime we get an immigration, a notification for a request for hold, then unless we actually have the warrant, we also have the warrant information, and we have the charges, we will not hold anyone under an immigration status without that, that information from a judge, that's already been signed by a judge. Part of the class action lawsuit is the fact that the county did, and they continue to hold illegal immigrants on their immigration status only with a request from Homeland Security. The request is only to, as you will, courtesy hold, and that's got them in trouble. So I don't want to put the county or the detention facility in that kind of position. So that was my response yesterday to Association of Counties. That's, that's, takes care of the training update. On the intervention, the inmate support program will meet on the 24th, which will be today. Recognition program, we, we do not have a nomination at this time. The detention stats, detention facility, average daily population, and this is for only a two-week period, so the figures are somewhat lower. That's because I took the statistics from two weeks ago when we last had the last meeting. So right now, our average daily population is seventy-three, which is nine less than last month. High population males is fifty-eight, which is nine less than last month. High population's fifteen, for females, that remained the same. For the month of June 11th through June 24th, there were seventy-three inmates, again, nine less than last month incarcerated in the facility. And again, this is showing a slight decrease in activity. Monthly agency totals for June 11th through the 24th, Silver City Police Department had seventy-three, New Mexico State Police fifteen, Grant County SO had twenty-five, Santa Clara had three, Baird PD had two, Hurley PD had two, APO's office had two, and Game and Fish had one. Our detention facility conducted thirty-two district court transports, Division One Manager Court had nineteen, Division Two Manager Court had two, Silver City Municipal Court had one, Santa Clara Municipal Court had zero, Baird Municipal Court had zero, and Hurley also had zero. We had zero medical transports for this month. Total number of transports for the month was fifty-four as compared to fifty-six the last month. Jail utilization and occupancy, offense levels are ten felonies, twenty-three misdemeanors, and warrants and probation violations, again, this total is always the highest, and that's at thirty-eight. And that has to do with multi-probation violations and failure to appear on warrants. So the total was seventy-one. Total number of hours in custody is two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four point oh four. Average length of stay is seven point nine three days. And that's my report.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, Gus?
No.
Thank you. Very thorough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. We did get done chips in with the Grant County projects, and we were able to get Hurley done by the end of last week. It took us a few days longer than what it should have, I guess you guys have heard about our chip spreader, that thing's getting old. I think it's a seventy-two model, that thing's over forty years old. It's been a great-
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a great barely. It's been a great machine over the years, but it's, it's time when we've got to replace that thing. It's getting where we can't control the feed on it, so we're putting out more rock than what we should have, and it's just a bigger hassle for everybody. But we did survive, we, through it, I still got the city of Baird to go help them chip seal and the town of Silver City whenever they get ready. Apparently waiting on some quotes to get back so we can get those road stripes that we did chip seal. I just sent a couple of guys down to that equipment rodeo, and they represented Grant County real good down there. They didn't, didn't win any trophies or anything, but it's kind of hard when I send two guys and Burton Leo sends fifteen on there, but they did real good down there and they enjoyed it on there. Well, other than that, it's kind of business as usual, we're getting caught up on some things that we, that we had to pull off while we were chip sealing. We will start out there at that subdivision that's trying to redump. I've got a schedule, start out there on July 7th, and we'll, we'll stay out there unless something happens until we get that thing done for those people, those residents out there. Other than that, people, you have any questions?
Any questions, Phil?
Don't have any.
Thanks, Phil.
Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Since Earl mentioned you at San Torito, of course, we submitted our application to the Mexico Finance Authority. We did submit the application for the full amount. It's my understanding that near ten thousand dollars has already been paid on the first round of invoicing, so I think that we'll have to reduce the overall amount that we want to, that we want to borrow. We discussed that prior to our application, I think that it's worked out okay. New Mexico DOT has another statewide plan meeting. There was a lot of discussion on, more on what the community would see as, as an overall transportation plan. I myself was more concerned on how that potentially could be paid for and thought that their overall planning process lacked ways of, of getting additional revenues to pay for those things that everybody's wanting. You know, it's kind of a wish list, and, but yet they didn't, they didn't have anything on their agenda about ways for gaining revenue, so, so that was the biggest thing that I kind of brought to the table. It was a topic of discussion, and, and hopefully we kind of gave them some ideas on how they could gain some potential revenues for, for transportation, so. Also, there was an estimate done by Engineers Inc. for copper trails. We did cancel the meeting yesterday, neither myself or Commissioner Ramos was able to attend the meeting. I did notice that the engineer from Engineers Inc. kind of, it was, seemed to engineer a little bit more in a walk trail, so the engineering alone, which Grant County has kind of stepped up and said we would provide, or attempt to provide, the engineering, it was over ninety thousand dollars, so. So I think that the overall cost of the project was over a million dollars, and so I think that we need to get with Engineers Inc. and try and scale back the, the type of project that we're looking for.
Who did Engineer Zink scope?
Well, he was actually present during the discussion that we had. We wanted to try and put the trail parallel with the highway. I went out and measured the highway itself, gave a presentation, a 3D presentation on Google Earth, on where exactly we wanted the trail. But there's some things that they added, you know, six inches of base course, three inches of asphalt, a curb and gutter, you know, there's a lot of things that they added to the-
So this is just an estimate on their engineering?
It was, it was an estimate. You know, most of the time, engineering is a percentage of the overall cost of the project, so I think that that's kind of where they're at, and, and we just need to go back to the, to the-
The way you're sharing it, because you over-engineered the project.
Well, I don't, I don't know if that's a, if that's what they do or not, but, but it was a, you know, it was kind of a yellow brick road instead of a, instead of a walking trail that we can afford, so.
Or we could cut our cost by hiring their engineer that we've been paying a higher cost for.
I don't know about that, that's-
Not in your scope right now, right?
That's right. Of course, everybody should be aware, the Hill of San Francisco Water Commission entered a contract with the ministry law firm to provide counsel so that we can have the New Mexico unit be prepared in the event that the Interstate Extreme Commission does approve a diversion project. We want to be ready to be able to contract for the water, but enter into contracts with Interstate Extreme Commission to, to advance in the engineering up to a thirty percent. The thirty percent is needed for the NEPA process to begin. And so we want to position ourselves to be able to do that and, and advance in, in a diversion project if, if they so choose. You were speaking about it earlier, I have looked into, and they're trying to help me out, Ty, Ty Base from Freeport's trying to help me out on locating a hydrology for the Hanover area, if, if they have stuff for that area. And I'm glad that, that Priscilla mentioned about the Colonia's, and, and one of the things that I wanted to maybe, to see how many dollars are going to be allocated to a potential emergency fund for CBBG. I know that those hearings are going to be coming up on the 30th.
There's currently five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand? And so I, I don't know if West Santa Clara would be eligible, but we certainly could do anything we possibly could. Maybe we should have some conversations up in Alpecu for, to see if they might be eligible. So that's all I've got, Commissioner.
Any questions, Phil?
Everything, could you discuss a little bit about the exhibit building out the fairgrounds reference to the Hill Valley Community Center?
The, the contractor should have already begun construction out there, Commissioner. We had some issues with Mexico Environment Department and the septic tank. Then we tried to get a location for the septic tank because they're requiring to put a system that will require a hundred and, a hundred and twenty feet or something of, of those, of leach. And so what our, our deal was, they, of course, it's a commercial building, so that's the requirement. We were trying to get, we were trying to get a variance in that we use the building once a year, and, you know, for three days, we didn't see that much sewage being, being utilized, and so we were hoping that they could reduce the amount, the overall size, maybe increase the size of a, of a septic tank and, and get away from, from having a leach system, so. So I think that, I know that Kevin's still in negotiations with Mexico Environment Department, hopefully he got that taken care of, but-
So do we know when the, when the construction is going to start?
They should have already, they should have already started. I thought they were going to start last week, if not, it should have been today or yesterday.
On your way home, Jack?
I will, sometime. I thought about that this morning, but I was already on my way.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
No, sir. Where do we stand with, with Lonny Sandoval's subdivision? Where are we at on that?
That's a good question.
Mr. Jim, we, we had good luck with the last two properties that we were trying to get to join in the dedication, and we did receive one of them. And then the very last one, I got a verbal confirmation from the owner that they would agree to the dedication, so we sent them the plat to sign, and now we haven't heard anything. So I've sent him another letter, I believe it was at the beginning of last week or maybe the end of two weeks ago, again, requesting that he return the paperwork, even if he's not going to-
He's in one of California?
This one is actually just in Los Cruces. I think he's a truck driver, though, so I think he goes out on the road for long periods of time. I think Dory somehow figured that out, and so that may be the problem. When I spoke to him, it really didn't seem like it was going to be a problem.
Maybe we need to head to Delonny and say, "Go find this guy."
We're just so close, you know?
I'm not being a good idea.
And again, this is the hardest part, you know, to get the dedication done. So that's where we are. We're trying to either get the plat back, sign or unsigned, so.
Thank you very much. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. DWI, pretty much, you saw, they're trying to get the contracts getting to New Mexico City. Same with the senior program. Terry's out right now, but everything seems to be working good. Public Works, they're actually in Santa Clara working on the senior center, they're trying to get the kitchen in compliance with code. We have the funds to do that through Terry, and so they're installing a new range and also installing new air, air supply system.
We don't know yet. We haven't decided.
It's a hood ring, just a hood.
Just a hood?
So it's not the ring, so no, you can't have it. We also did some, some painting over at the courthouse.
Commissioner, we need some equipment out of the fairground.
I need that, Mr. Chairman. And so also finished up the, for the extension office, that, the cage that was there that you had asked for, and so we're done with that. The shooting range, project will start after July 4th weekend, it tear down the existing shooting, the skeet shooting building, and put up a new one. And I want to thank Freeport-McGrane for their, you know, they applied for that, they got that grant, and along with some in-kind services from the county and through Freeport-McGrane, that's going to be a very nice facility. Not that it is, now they're taking great care of it, and it's being used a lot, and we've been using more now as we get this new building for the skeet shooters.
Is there anywhere you can get them to come to the next meeting or the following, just give, so we can give them some kind of certificate of appreciation there?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get Justin and them to, to come. And they're also, hopefully, when this project's over, will move to the next phase, and they're thinking about putting another building there where the rifle shooters are and all that, so it's coming around really good, and I want to thank them, the board members of the advisory board there. At the airport, working on finalizing the job description, trying to get another person out there. Right now, Justin and I are working with Dave Morrison, covering some of the flights so we can save on some overtime. So I've got him out there for a couple of days, and I'll be out there doing the same thing. We have the year inspection from July 1st through the 3rd. Southwest concrete, we sprayed some Seal Master on- Southwest concrete, we sprayed some Seal Master on the thresholds, markings to allow any chance of violations of inspections. They'll be doing that tomorrow. July 15th, we'll have the kickoff meeting for the airport action plan, that's going to be sponsored by WH Pacific. So I invite you guys, it's just a luncheon, talk about it. We have all kind of stakeholders in place accounting the Forest Service, DOT, July 15th from 12 to 1. So I invite all of you to be at that luncheon with us, sponsored by WH Pacific. At the conference center in the four bedroom. Where am I at now? Fire. As everybody knows, we're still in fire restrictions as the 4th of July is coming up. I mean, it's, it's just going to be one of those weekends that we just hold our breath and make sure that people understand the dangers of fireworks. The State Forest Service has put out a fireworks safety tip and I think the safest part is not to light them. That's my opinion right now. We know that the fact is, is if you look at every day now, around 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, the winds start to pick up and, and it's just dry. You look at the weather for the month of June, above normal fire protection, which will persist over California, Southern Arizona and Southwest New Mexico. And so if you look at it, yeah, we're coming to the end of July, I mean, the end of June into July, we're hoping that the monsoons start to come. It's happening on the east side of the state, we just hope that that pattern switches and we get more moisture coming in from the south and try to get some moisture here because it is really dry. So I just want to encourage people to, to make sure that they understand that the fire restrictions are still in place, the restrictions from State Forest Service are still in place, the restrictions from US Forest Service is still in place, Silver City has fire restrictions in place. We posted them all over the county and the town to make sure that people understand that and just, you know, it's not so much the loss, the loss of property, but the loss of life. And when it comes to firefighting, fires, that's our number one goal is, is the safety of our firefighters. I attended the Association of Counties Fire and Emergency Management affiliate meetings last week in Daming, got some good information. One of the good things that, that came out of that was, there was House Bill 287 that was $50,000 for a fallen firefighter in the line of duty with the VFDs. They've increased that to 250,000. So we're real happy with that. God forbid we don't, we don't have, we don't need to use that in, in the line of duty. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if you have any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for Randy?
Just a couple. What about our rabbit grandstands? We got them yet? For Officer Grants?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, I think that, yeah, they were, they were on order?
On order?
Yes. I haven't talked to Justin about it, but he's supposed to have that. Doug, I haven't had a chance to talk to him, he's been out at the airport.
We've had, I've had a couple people talk to me now about the distributing of food for the seniors and such, if in fact we could utilize the exhibit building and, and it's going to be kind of iffy right now as far as how much room they're going to need and during construction, if they're going to be locked out and stuff, so Marilyn Elkhorn may be giving you a call and/or Mike Cuff.
Mike Hinn?
Cuff.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, I will definitely look into that and see where we're at with that.
They were talking about that they needed more room because of the increase of commodities being passed out and the, they just don't have enough room at the senior citizen, senior citizens center now and that they needed more room and they thought that may be a good spot and that it may eventually be a, a community center. It will be and it may be a good spot for that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Hall will look into that and I'll get back to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, Linda, do you have anything to add to?
Um, yes, I do. I'd just like to report that, I'd like to report, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that we did receive our PELT funding. So we actually received 224,000 more than we did last fiscal year.
And we have it in the bank?
Yes, we do.
I thought we were going to have to borrow some money from the hospital.
I'm glad we didn't have to.
Okay, thank you very much. Row?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I want to go over a report that I had that I didn't report last meeting with, in regards to our Civil Process Division. For the month of May, we had a total of 670 papers that were served by Civil Process, which includes DVOs, notices, subpoenas, summons and writs. We did 12 transports to the prisons, back and forth for a total of 5,966 miles. In regards to normal activity, it's been fairly busy for, for the Sheriff's Office. We've been dealing with a lot of suspicious activity and I'm proud and pleased that the community is getting a little more involved in reporting suspicious activity, so I encourage them to continue to do that because the officers, the deputies respond to their areas and it really helps us in doing our job. We have also been getting a lot of reports of loud parties and now that the weather's really been hot and warm, people are actually out there partying and getting a little in trouble and stuff like that, so we just want to try and keep them safe in that and just want to continue to have the public involved with us and I encourage them just to continue to do that. Currently, we hired one deputy, his name is Tyler Sherman, just graduated the academy, really great, good kid. He's going to be an asset to this department. He's already been involved in an incident where, where he, he knows what it's going to be about and I'm really pleased to have brought him on board. Currently I do have two positions open, we're in the background phase on both of them, so hopefully we'll have those built soon. Now that summer's here, the guys are really running without the extra help and I really thank them for what they do because it has been fairly busy for them. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. If you have any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Chairman? Okay, Chef. Thank you. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Each of you should have received a reappraisal packet that looks like this. It explains exactly what we do in the office. If you guys have any questions or more than half, we can go in the office and we'll be happy to answer your questions. And also Mary has certified, certified the values to Property Tax Division and should be getting Abby a yield of control report this week. That's all I got.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Any questions for her? Okay, Rob?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I don't have anything to add today.
All right. Abby? She has a list.
That's not all for you. I just wanted to remind you that we had a special meeting also scheduled after Thursday's regular meeting, right after that, that'll be when you meet with US Forest Service on the travel management plan.
Okay.
And then also today, we're going to tour the conference center.
Right. Okay, we'll adjourn from the conference center. Okay, any questions?
Well, just, I'm glad you brought up the situation about the party and hopefully we can do some things these next four years and get things that our youth can, can start participating in and hopefully we can avoid some of these parties. You know, it was amazing, last weekend, my wife and I went down to Luna County and we spent the, we spent the Saturday there, you know, at the movies and just running into a lot of Grant County people that were spending money eating there and going to the movies and what have you. It's, it is amazing how many people were down there and hopefully we can produce some projects here that keep our people here, spending their money here instead of in our neighboring county, although it was nice in Luna County, but it'd be nice if we could keep our people here and spend our money here. So, you know, so I'm glad you brought that up because our, our youth do not have very much to do here and so they resort to partying and going out into, you know, the forest and doing that kind of stuff and hopefully they're, they're utilizing the forest, but not in those bad ways. And, but that's, that's something hopefully we can really start working on through our Parks and Recs and, and other groups through the county and figure out what we can do. That's all I've got.
Okay. I'll probably do one, I will do one Thursday. Okay. I have a favor to ask of Commissioner Ramos, if you don't mind. For three and a half years, I've sat on the water commission and you've sat on the transportation commission and you really like water and I'm, really know a lot more about transportation.
Right.
I was hoping that you would trade with me.
You don't want it to be hard to do that, but actually very easy, yes, I will.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, in, in that case, I would ask the staff to, to write some resignation letters for the two committees and reappointment letters to the two committees, if, if that's all right with everybody? You don't have any problem with that?
Can I give you my glasses?
Yeah, okay. And I would like to add a close session on the, the regular commission meeting to talk about the county manager.
Yeah.
Because today we have, today's the close of the, the application process for our new county manager, so we can kind of go over where we are on our schedule and such. And my next question is, actually, my next two questions are for Anthony. When was the last time we did a master plan? And are we doing one presently? Have we just started the process? Just kind of catching up.
Are you talking about a master plan for, you mean a comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
We have not been funded for a comprehensive plan yet, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And also at the next work session, I'd like to start going over the ICIP.
Okay, and we want to have a public meeting before?
I think we ought to have a public meeting between now and then if you can.
I spoke to Alicia about that yesterday, she's actually going to set one up.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I had, so if anybody, does anybody need seconds? Then we are going to go over to the conference center, so I guess we're going to recess, reconvene at the conference center. Anybody's welcome to come walk around with us, we're just going to walk around and talk about the future over there. Nothing binding, obviously, this is a work session and then we will, we will adjourn from there. So, motion to go to recess?
Motion.
All those favor, sing, clap, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.